Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the delay in the start of tonight's meeting. This is the Planning Board meeting of February 6, 2019. We have two public hearings tonight and then a few informal conversations with folks. To my right is Paul Labby. Paul Doster was here tonight. He's just out of the room for a second. Myself, Bob Wagner, the chair. And I want to welcome our newest member on television, her second meeting. Stephanie, please welcome to the Planning Board. So we have our first public hearing is for the Clean Focus Renewables of Louisville, Colorado. Before we start, I'm just going to read through our procedures for a public hearing. There's a clipboard going around for people to sign in if that can get, make sure it makes it all the way around. So I'll open the public hearing and read the hearing notice, the meeting notice. We will then ask the applicant or their representative to come up and talk about the project. And I will note for some of you that have regular watchers of Planning Board meetings, this is not necessarily a Groundhog Day situation. We did hold a hearing on this project, an initial hearing, a number about a month or so ago. And the second posting for that particular hearing at the Daily Hampshire Gazette, the Daily Hampshire Gazette actually did not, even though everything was submitted on time and they had everything, they missed noticing it a second time. So that first public hearing actually was, is void in terms of not being an official public hearing because it was not noticed twice in the Daily Hampshire Gazette. So we're essentially starting over again, although we've had numerous conversations with the representative. It also then enables us, as Mike Pachek has joined us, for all the members of the Planning Board to actually be present at what is now the first hearing. And hopefully then, if there is any subsequent ones, to be available for all of those. If this was a true continuation of that first hearing, for example, Steph was not on the Planning Board at the time, so she would be able to ask questions and comment but wouldn't be able to vote. But now, since we're starting all over again because of this mix-up with the newspaper, we're, this is essentially the first hearing. So we have a public hearing on February 6, 2019, at 6:30 in Hatfield Memorial Town Hall. The applicant, Clean Focus Renewables of Louisville, Colorado, is seeking a special permit with site plan approval from the Planning Board pursuant to Section 6 Development Methods and 9, Section 9 Definitions, subsection 9.634, Solar Energy Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Installations of the Town of Hatfield Zoning Bylaw at Zero Main Street, owned by the Chang Family Trust, the South Deerfield Assessors Map Lot, Assessors Map 202 Lot 9, Zone Rural Residential, for the purpose of installing, owning, operating, and maintaining a 5-megawatt AC ground-mounted solar array. And the complete application was available at the town clerk's office. So as I said earlier, I'm going to ask the applicant or their representative to come up and explain the project again, as if this is the first time you've done it, Zach. And then we'll ask for any comments from any supporters of the project. We'll be entertained. And if you have any questions, to make them through the board, who will engage the applicant. We will then entertain any comments from opponents of the project. Again, any questions should be made through the board to the applicant. The board will ask questions of the applicant, the supporters or opponents as necessary. And then at some point, we will close the, tonight's public hearing. We'll deliberate, at which time, we may ask additional questions of the applicant, supporters or opponents. And upon completion of that deliberation, we'll seek a motion to either approve the project without conditions, to reject the project, or to continue the hearing to a future date with instructions to the applicant. So with that in mind, Mr. Chang, are you going to have Zach do this? Okay. Zach, come on up.
So I have some updated 11-by-7s.
Thank you.
And Steph, right?
Yes.
Feel free to just ask any questions.
Great.
Thank you. And these are some information on some of the landscaping features that we're proposing.
Thank you.
I have some extra 11-by-7s. Does anyone?
Thank you.
Do you have a bigger version of this that you can put up on the board?
I do not.
Okay. All right.
So thank you for having me back for the first time again. I'm Zach Swookie, and I'm with Clean Focus Renewables and Greed Skies Renewable Energy. I'll run through some of the basics of the project again, just to refresh everyone. We're proposing a 5-megawatt AC solar project at Zero Main Street with the Chang family here. I think it's like 6.6 megawatts DC. The parcel is about 95 acres. The project area is about 29 acres. Our optaker is the Smart Program and Eversource. And it's a pretty straightforward project. Many of you have seen the site. It's flat. It's had an agricultural use in the past. And now we are proposing solar for it. So we have made some changes since we discussed this last time, and I just want to run through those with everyone. So I would say probably the first page is easiest to look at. You might want to look at page four and five for additional reference. But anyways, first change to this plan set is we have revised wetland lines. So GZA came out and peer reviewed the work that the wetland scientist that we hired originally did. And they walked the site together and they came to an agreement. And so if you look at, the first page is a good example, there's a large, round IVW. That's an independent vegetative wetland, sort of in the offset right center of the array. We're putting a 50-foot setback on that. And then similarly to the north, there's a hydric soil line, and you can see it following the property line and then up into the northeast. And we've got a 100-foot setback from that hydric soil line. So that's the first change. We believe that Conservation will agree to this. After all, they were the ones who hired the peer reviewer, and we accepted all of the changes that were suggested. And we're meeting with them next week.
We're still waiting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. Last time we talked, John McClellan was here. I don't know if he's here tonight. But he had a concern about his view as an abutter from the south. So we implemented a cedar fence along the southern perimeter of the array. And contrary to what I thought, I think the audience agreed that cedar chain link doesn't really matter along Main Street. So in this version, we're showing a chain link fence along the eastern perimeter, running north and south along Main Street. That can be cedar. In this iteration, it's chain length because no one had any strong preference either way. So that's a change. In addition to that, you'll notice to the east of the fence, running along Main Street, we have offset, offset Hanoki false cypress. And I passed out some information on that to you. There's a picture of it there. It's like a 20-foot false cypress. It's about 15 feet in diameter at its most mature. It'll probably grow 20 feet tall. And those are offset at, I think, 30-foot offsets. So those are implemented along Main Street.
You expect those to fill in completely so you can't see the array?
Exactly. Yeah. So at their most mature, they'll be, they'll each be about 15 feet wide. By the way, we're offsetting them. It'll basically create one large vegetative buffer. And they'll be about 20 feet tall, maybe a little taller depending on, you know, how they take to the climate here. So we're proposing that. And then lastly, there is a 100-foot setback from Main Street. So I think last time we were here, it was, oh man, it was probably right at the front yard minimum, which was 30, 35 feet. And so now that's at 100 feet. And those are the only changes we've made to this design. Of course, we updated the one-line electrical a little bit because the wetland altered the, you know, the electrical engineering. But that's updated for you as well. And I think that covers it.
So Zach, you're actually looking at the original submission, which was prior to the delineation of the wetlands, both, and the hydric soils, and your desire to keep this at 5 megawatts. So remind me again, the...
Frank and Nancy Swazlowski's house.
Right. Okay. So is that the gentleman who was here?
No. His house is...
That was Mr. McClellan.
McClellan.
He was the neighbor to the south.
No.
He was past that.
Yeah.
Can't see it.
Shelley was here last time. She's not here tonight? Okay. Because there is quite a difference in terms of, for Steph and Mike to look at, so the array now wraps around the property line, basically wrapping around the house, the Swazlowski house. And very close to the, in one case, very, very close to the property. Do you have any sense as to what that setback is?
Yeah, they had to get more.
No, but I'm glad you brought that up. I actually, so I just got these plan sets today from my engineer. And pointed out that there's going to be a huge shading issue because to the south there are trees. And we're really close to those trees. So I, you know, I didn't have time to request those revisions. But I would say that those three module blocks, maybe four, five, six, all need to move as they go away.
There's a giant tree there.
Exactly. And there's no way we're producing solar in the shade of that, so.
Yeah, you mean immediately to the north of the house?
Yeah.
I see some trees just immediately to the north of that...
Property line.
Right.
Right at the corner.
Right at the corner there, yeah. So you're talking about the three arrays to the...
And there's a hedge right along.
Yeah. So you're talking about those three arrays that are to the west of this jog in the property line, and then the couple that are maybe this one?
Exactly. Yeah, I would probably go up four or five.
So where would they get moved to?
We would not. There's no room for them.
There's no room for them.
We could maybe increase the module size to make up for that loss. But, I mean, keeping them there is a loss across the board, so.
We'll get to supporters and opponents. If you don't mind, we'll ask a couple more questions if people, if we have them, and then I'm sure it'll generate others. On this false cypress, unfortunate name, is this a, I mean, is this potentially an invasive species? I mean, this isn't a native tree, is it? I mean, it's...
No, it's not native to the U.S. But I don't believe it's invasive, if that makes sense. And it won't, it won't just wildly proliferate.
We thought kudzu wasn't going to be invasive either at one point in time. But how big are the one, how big are the individuals that you're actually going to put in when you put them in? You say that they'll grow to 20 feet and about 15-foot spread, but are these going to be like, and how long does that take?
That's a good question. I'll have to talk to our landscape architect about that. I mean, I think you can get them from a nursery in different sizes. And I just want to say that these are interchangeable with, you know, if there's an evergreen that is more suitable to the community, we can swap that out. This is, what I think we really wanted to demonstrate here is that this is, this is what a vegetative buffer could look like along Main Street. And I think that demonstrates that well. Any, you know, evergreen or coniferous variety would look probably pretty similar along the road there.
Why don't we open it up, and then we'll move from there. Are there any individuals here in the audience? Is that, are you, are you done?
Yeah. So I covered all of the updates, and I think I gave you a brief overview of the project. We've been here before, so, yeah.
Can I just... Yeah. So Zach, what was the original plan? What were the number of panels, and what are the number of panels now?
So that is going to be on the second to last page.
Okay. I'll look.
Well, I think for the, for the audience, it would be good to have that information.
So in this updated version, we've got 18,704 panels.
And what, and you know what you had the first time? Is it roughly the same amount? I know you're trying to stick to 5 megawatts, right?
Roughly the same amount, yeah.
This is the same amount as the previous plan?
You would know best in the previous plan where it would be.
They moved that up. Moved this over. Yeah, they didn't have anything here. Now they got it. Yeah. And they got this.
It appears that the number actually stayed the same from the previous plan. What happened is we lost, we increased module size, but we did lose the number of modules. So I think that's an engineer mistake.
And you've already applied for the interconnection agreement?
We have, yeah. Like, seven months ago.
Yeah.
So the actual number of modules stays the same? Number of panels stays the same?
It'll be roughly in that ballpark.
Just the size is larger.
Because, yeah, because you're taking, you've added more around this, of which it sounds like you're going to take some of them out. Okay, so, yeah, okay.
How many years is this lease for?
20 years.
And is there, like, a decommissioning agreement that you're working on? Or is zoning bylaw suggests that there's a decommissioning agreement with the property owner?
Yeah. So we submitted a decommissioning narrative to the town, explaining how we do it, where we put the funds, you know, if we default in any way, that you guys can take the funds and, you know, put those towards decommissioning. I could, you know, compile an estimate, like, break it out, item by item. But I haven't been asked to do so yet, so, yeah. But we do account for that. It's built into the modeling of the project. And we're prepared to put that money into an interest-bearing CD probably until it's ready to be used.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So are there any supporters of this project that would like to make a comment at this point? Okay. Are there any opponents who would like to make a comment? Bernie, can you come up to the, sit here?
I have a lot identify themselves.
Yeah. Yeah. Identify yourself and where you're...
Bernie Smorowski, 14 Upper Farms Path. Earlier today, Zach informed me of the company's decision to reduce the setback from approximately 280 to 300 feet, down to 100 feet away from the road. Is that correct, Zach? So we're not happy with that, for sure. And secondly, it's hard to imagine the surveyors, the people who went out to look at those wetlands, to come up with a determination saying that there's only, you know, one wet spot out there when it's been wet all winter. Maybe you can tell me how they came up with that?
Yeah, so it was delineated initially by Conoco in the summertime. And Conservation Commission had some doubts about, not the quality of it, but the, I guess, the variety of it. And so we, the town hired GZA consultants to go out and verify the wetlands. And they agreed on almost everything, but you'll see in this iteration, the hydric soil line was moved further south. And then there's that new wetland in the center of the array. So this has been through two certified consulting firms. And they finally came to an agreement. And we don't anticipate the town asking for a third opinion, but they're pretty confident that it's, it is what it is.
And you'll meet with the Conservation Commission to go over that?
Correct. Yeah. And we've been working with each other through this whole process. So they're overseeing the peer reviewer, who's reviewing the work that the scientist we originally hired did. And so everyone's in communication. And that also includes Mark Stinson from the state DEP. So he's involved as well. And we get the sense now that everyone's comfortable with the lines, and that there are no wetlands unaccounted for.
Where and how much was it moved? The wetland line?
Yeah. So originally, the line, I think it ran right across here, like that. So it's moved maybe 100 feet or so.
So this is all this wetland property?
This is all super wet.
Wet, wetter than here?
Yeah. Yeah. This is, they did not find any wetlands in this area.
Bernie, if, it's unfortunate that we don't have bigger versions of this for the public to see. But if you, if you want, you can look at the previous plan, where the, where it came all the way up to the line, and now how it's set back to reflect the, this wetland. This didn't change in terms of that wetland, or setback from the woods and the wetlands there, but it did here.
Okay. It's encroaching here.
Right. That's where the change is here in terms of getting up. But it sounds like some of them are going to have to be taken out because of the shading issue, but...
And going from, was it 280 or 300?
Right. Well, actually, the original plan had virtually no setback in terms of us. That was part of our conversation the last time around. And we'll get to that. Yeah. Yeah. And we'll get to that. Anyone else want to make a comment on this? Yeah. Come on up, Darrell. Or actually, the gentleman in the back, and then, yeah, you guys fight it out. Who wants to go first?
Go right ahead. No, no, yeah. Go right ahead. Hi. Robert Slush of Main, 439 Main Street, Hatfield. I'm just down the street of this project. I'm totally against it. And one of the main things is, because of Chang's notorious past, I grew up in town, and I'm not anything for Chang. I'm totally against. I don't need the crime or whatever he brought into this town, what he did in Whately. So I'm not for this project at all.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just have a couple of questions. At the, you know, Darrell Williams, Nine Depot Road in Hatfield. And as a farmer, I, of course, am opposed on some level of this. And we talked about it at the, at the last meeting. I mean, this is ag land. This is not the greatest ag land, but it is, as Bernie pointed out, Winuski soils. It is, it is, it is good land and can be farmed. So I don't want houses there, certainly, but putting solar arrays there, I'm not too, too happy with. Plus, it's a kind of a gateway for those people entering Hatfield from, from Whately on River Road. Moving the array even closer, even though you're going to put some sort of buffer there, it's still going to be solar panels that people are going to see. And so I, you know, not really too, too excited about that. And I personally, if we're going to have it, would love to be able to move that line back. We had talked about getting that line back, at least to the tree line, which was, what was it, Bernie, close to 300 feet? Somewhere in that. I know that reduces the, the size of the array, of the array, but, you know, I mean, seems like you can do okay with 3 megawatts or 4 megawatts, you know, instead of just 5 megawatts. And then my, kind of my last comment or question is, you know, he's already pointed out a couple of things in this drawing that are not, like, these are, we're not sure of what the offset from, say, the Swazlowski property and the other property, you know, how far away, and some of that is going to be shaded. So I'm assuming he's going to have to come back with another version of this plan, which addresses those, those kinds of, those kinds of issues. So that would be, that would be that question. And anyway, those are my concerns. In the end, I would prefer not to have it, but if we could make it a little smaller and set it back a little bit, I think it would, would be beneficial to everybody in Hatfield. So, anyway, thank you.
Darrell, wait before you leave.
Sure.
So I just have a couple of questions for Darrell. And then if others want to ask Darrell questions, we'll let you sit down and we'll move on from there. So, you know, I'm really challenged by this in, in the sense that we have, we know from the, just the approval not required lots on Main Street, we've got five there. So at a minimum, we could easily get five single-family row houses along there at the same entry that we have, and lose that land, at least that part of that property. And then, of course, there's always the potential out there, wetlands notwithstanding of, you know, subdivision going in as well. So I'm really struggling with this. I, you know, you know how I feel about protecting farmland and Winuski soils are statewide important soils. It may not be habily silt alone, but it's pretty decent farm ground.
Right.
And this isn't on the record for this hearing, so I'd like to get it on the record. Notwithstanding the issues of the wetlands and our desire, which we talked about at our last meeting on this, for a setback, and maybe some kind of setback that actually was, you know, culturally and scenically appropriate, you know, we were talking about maybe it being a mixture of, of evergreens and farm, like, maybe even having some of that strip rented and farmed. If it was 200, 300 feet wide by the length of the frontage, that would provide for a decent amount of farm ground. You, we talked about there being no topsoil removal, no leveling or grading of this, of the, of the lot to accept the arrays, that the arrays would be only spiked, they'd be installed with spikes, there'd be no concrete footings to address, and that this interior road that you have would be a pervious, would be a pervious surface of some sort, like a farm lane, as opposed to an impervious concrete or asphalt.
Yeah.
Right. So that would allow a decommissioning for this, again, there'd be weeds, of course, that would grow. And maybe you can ask, how would you maintain the, the area under the, I know, seeing all of the arrays that we do have around the state, that grass grows under it, but how are you maintaining that in terms of dealing with weeds or invasives that might come up that may even shadow, shade your panels?
Yeah. So we never use chemicals. And during the, you know, growing season, I guess, the RONM team will be out twice a month to mow and control weeds without the use of chemicals, of course. So from spring through fall, they'll be taking care of that. And then snow removal as needed in the wintertime for safe access and things like that.
And so if, at the time of decommissioning, you could pull these arrays, I mean, these arrays will get pulled out?
Yeah.
And the ground at some point then could be restored into an agricultural use, for example?
Yeah, exactly.
It could be an organic farm.
It could be an organic farm. It'd be clean.
Yeah. So the H-beams will just be pulled straight out of the soil. The site is, will be, I guess, more stabilized probably than it is now because we're planning a sort of a low-growth conservation seed mix in the soil there, which will be maintained for the next 20 years, mowed, and weeds will be controlled. So, yeah, it's a, it's a pretty clean decommissioning process. We're not leaving behind any chemicals or anything of that sort.
Can you address the, thank you. Well, Darrell, can you comment on the issue regarding the farm ground and just the houses?
Well, yeah. It's, I agree with... Well, yeah, it's, I, I agree with you. I, I don't want to see five houses up along there, but some sort of setback. And maybe something that says that there won't be houses put there. I, I don't know how you can do that or if that's, that's possible. But being able to set this project back a little bit, you know, to what we had talked about at the previous meeting, would, would at least push some of those, some of that panels, make it a little harder for, for, for people, people to see it. Would enable some sort of farming that happened in front of it. So.
So, so, yeah, so we're caught in a little bit in betwixt, in between. If we have a 100-foot setback, then we are not, we're definitely not going to get houses because you're not, you're not going to have enough land to get the houses in. If we go too far back, excuse me?
Bob, you'll have the frontage, though.
You have.
Yeah, but you won't have, you won't have the mansion.
You won't have the mansion. You still need 45,000. Well.
Yeah, but then.
You've got two houses, maybe. You've got two houses.
Maybe.
You could get two houses. We could make it, we could actually make a condition on, on that. In effect, that's all part of this project, can't be subdivided out. If we go back too far, we would definitely have to do that because, as a condition. Because then you could get this and five houses if you went back too far.
Yeah, if you, if you play 300 feet, you're in real trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah. Understood, it's a fine, it's a fine line. Now.
If you put the condition in for 100 feet, why can't you put the condition in for 300 feet?
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying that we could, we would, we would absolutely have to do that for the, if we went back 200 or 300, if we went back 300 feet or 200, even 250 feet, right?
The town of Whately, I looked up their first two large arrays there, which are nearly as big as this. They're required to go 450 feet back. It has since changed, but those two had to go 450 feet back from the road.
Well, since we're talking about this setback, maybe you, you heard, I think, loud and clear from the folks here last time about this desire to have this setback. And while, and it should be noted that the setback that's here now is much larger than the original one. I mean, the one you came in with, it was like, you know, what, 15 feet back from the road? So we're at 100 feet now. But we did talk about a 200 to 300-foot setback with.
The line, the line that defines the, the property, that was.
Though, behind this Swazowski property, yeah, so from there over. Yeah, so maybe you can address, I mean, obviously, the wetlands are scrimping you a little bit here as well. But maybe you can talk a little bit more about, I, I'm assuming that it's just because you're trying to stay at 5 megawatts.
Exactly, yeah. We just can't go any farther back. And so this is what we're proposing, is 100 feet. And we're willing to go to an extent on the landscaping in between there and Main Street.
Darryl?
Why can't it go to 4 megawatts or 3 megawatts?
That's a good question. It's not my decision to make. I just, I just know it can't, it can't go back that far.
It's got to be a little better.
I mean.
We, we asked that before.
Yeah.
What was, why is 5 the mag, is 5 the magic number? I mean, why?
Yeah, I mean, so it's the, trying to think of a good way to put this. The, the margins for it are thinner than one would think. And this is sort of the sweet spot in terms of like, this project makes money and this project supports the Changs and this project can pay taxes to the town. And if we go 300 or 400 feet back, that's not going to happen.
Zach, can you, do you know, I, I don't know where you are with the pilot, the negotiation of the pilot. But could you share what the tax revenue would be annually on the 5-megawatt project?
I don't have that number, but our finance team will work with the town on that.
Could you get us a ballpark, a rough estimate, so we would have that?
Absolutely.
Wouldn't we want to know that before a decision is made? So we would know how much revenue?
Well, the way it's worked in the past is the, the companies negotiate the pilot with the select board after the fact. That's, that's been the way it's been done in the past. So maybe we'll have to change that, I don't know.
I got another question. At the last meeting, we talked about why, why can't we, when we talked about moving, moving it back and if you, if you're dead set on, on the 5 megawatts or kilowatts, whatever. We just, we asked about moving it up, why can't it go into Whately?
So it's incredibly wet up there. You don't see it on these plans, but the, the Hydrick Soil Line to the north that runs along the northern perimeter, that is just the beginning of what is north of there. So, I mean, you can't see it, so it's hard to imagine. But there are BBWs and IBWs all over, all the way up into Whately. It's, it's a very fragile.
So coming up this way, this is, this is wet up here, you're talking about?
Yeah. So we, we did explore that and unfortunately are not able to go north. And similarly, west is even worse. It's basically a swamp, so.
Me going further back on the, in the Chang property in Hatfield, that last corner there or triangle?
So in your company's opinion, 5 is the, the red line, that's it? If we don't get 5, we're not going to go?
I believe so.
Okay.
So this is what I'm proposing.
When you say you believe so, is that's just because, has that been definitively said to you that this has to be 5 meg, megawatts or it's not, or we're not going to pursue it?
Yeah, that's correct.
If in fact, you're going to get involved here, we need a lot more definition on 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, maybe 4, maybe 8. How many panels you're taking out, how far you're going to be away from that sideline? I want something in real definitive writing of that this money for demolition is going to be held in an escrow account over that period of time. I know I'm not going to be here. There's a lot of people that in here may not be here. I want to know now how that's going to be demolished. Not necessarily how it's going to be demolished, but what is going to be returned to and that money to be held in escrow. Okay?
Can you explain more about the decommissioning, what exactly?
No, it's, it's fine about, I don't, I don't think I need, yeah, decommissioning, we're not talking ships here. When you, I don't care about how you demolish it. I just want to make sure that the land is returned back to what it was the day before you walked on it. Okay? And that money to be held in an escrow account, okay? And I need definition really about, behind the Swazowski property, there's some real definition in there of, we're going to take 3, 4, 5, we're going to take 5, 6, 7. I want to know about away from the property line, okay?
For the shade part?
Yeah, the ones that you talked about in here that you would take out?
Yeah, would you guys be willing to agree on something tonight?
Well, I can, I, we should, first of all, are there, are there any other opponents or supporters in the room that would like to make a comment before we close the public hearing? John and then Bernie and then Mike, did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, so, go ahead, John.
Got a question on this, that wet spot in the middle of the field there.
Yeah.
John, can you let the audience know who you are and sit over here?
I know Whately has a solar project on Christian Lane. And there's a wet area goes up town through. You can ask Bernie, I drive down every day, I do, and see water standing, you know, last year was a wet year. But why is that operation so close to a ditch line? Well, that ditch has been there, I'm, I'm 65. I remember that ditch line being there all those years, all these years, water in there. And it doesn't go down to a river anywhere like, like that across the street, because it's farm fields. It goes out, I would say, pointing, maybe going southwest.
Southwest.
Southwest, out to the fields, out that way. I had land out there. I know there's, you know, wet spots, dry spots. Why can't this be, you know, like, used?
Why can't the wetland be used?
That, that spot right in the middle. If you're saying, if you're saying all this is like saturated, can't go back there, why can't you go back there? Because the machines can't, you know, drive down through?
It's a matter of state regulation. Massachusetts has some of the.
I'm just saying, Whately is, that area, you know, why is one town different than the other town or, you know, vice versa?
You're relying on our Conservation Commission on that issue, John?
I'm just, you know, talking, because there's, you know, you're talking about wetlands and everything like that. I don't like to see it, you know, be developed either, but if you can kind of work with that spot in the middle.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be an option just because of the wetlands delineations and the Conservation Commission, which we need to actually, we don't have any representative from the Conservation Commission here tonight, do we?
Harrison.
Oh, Harrison, do you, can you talk a little bit about what your conversations have been on this?
Yeah, Harrison Bartle, 49 Main Street, part of the Conservation Commission. We're still waiting to hear back from the solar company on this actual project and the wetlands spots on the field. Last we discussed with them, they were still finalizing with the person that we hired to finalize these wetlands in the different spots that were questionable. So I'm going to the meeting on February 14th, not knowing any of the information I heard tonight. And we still have to make a final decision our own on if we're going to let this happen or not. So seeing what we've seen today is definitely less than we had anticipated on wetlands from previous. There was a lot questioned farther back in the plot of how wet that was. And there was two plots actually farther up, one that is listed and another one that is not. So I guess we'll hear more on the 14th, on why that's the case.
Okay. Bernie, you had another comment and then Mike?
Do the Changs have an option to lengthen this by another 10 years, 15 years, 5 years, 20 years?
That's a fixed term.
Fixed term, no op, they have no option, you have no option to lengthen it?
It'll be decommissioned after the project.
Is there a lifespan of the panels, is that the deal?
Yeah, and, and the incentive program that the state's offering.
And that length of time is 20 years, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the lease term.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Mike Cahill, North Street. One of my questions was just about answered, had to do with process and the fact that you, before making a decision, need to have the Conservation Commission's approval, I guess, of the, of the final plans, which are yet to be developed and submitted. The other question I had was, in addition to the pilot program, the revenue for the community, is there any other benefit from this project to the community? For example, the production, the output of the power? Is there any benefit to the community for, does the community share in that? Or can the community share at all in that?
So all of the power produced is spoken for in that the utility is our occupier. I mean, the, the power will be consumed locally, but it will have no impact on any electric bills.
Okay, so, okay, so that, that, that element is not, is, is, is out basically?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I have a couple of other questions.
Do we want to close the public hearing, though, and then you can ask questions?
Well, yeah, I guess we can do it that way.
Yeah, because then we, because we should move on.
Okay.
All right, so. Okay, well, all right, any other further questions or comments? Go ahead, Darryl.
And we talked about this at the last meeting, was, I assume the land is under 61A. So I would assume there would have to be a process that, that the Changs and would have to go through to take that portion out of 61A, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's what I was going to ask, so I had, I had notes from.
Okay, from last time?
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? It's unanimous. So I'm going to propose that we, we continue this public hearing until we hear definitively back from the Conservation Commission and on what they have determined and how the project may actually then further be modified based on that, those decisions by the Conservation Commission and then the items that have already been raised tonight regarding this corner, this southeast corner of the property relative to the, the shading, that issue. And then the other items that have been raised, additional information on the decommissioning and then additional information on the, the town revenue, the tax revenue to the town.
And potentially how far they could set it back?
Yeah, based on, and if there is any way then to set it back. I mean, I think you're hearing loud and clear, Zach, that there's a desire, and I think we're all, we're sort of caught between a bit of a rock and a hard place in that, you know, as an alternative to a subdivision or even five houses on Main Street, we have an opportunity here that may maintain this property in a, in a way that can be re, repurposed for agricultural use or in the future. But there's still enough outstanding questions and the concern about this area here and its impact visually along Main Street, River Road, that area, which if you, presumably you've been out there, you know you've been out there to walk the property if you've actually driven up and down that road. It's, it's sort of an iconic landscape. Any questions or comments?
I also had another question about, maybe Zach knows this. At the last meeting, we talked about a Vesper Sparrow habitat. Was that, was there ever, ever a determination on this is a, this is their habitat or it's not their habitat?
So we're, we're in contact with NHESP and have initiated the Mesa review and have not heard back yet. So I'll keep you posted on that.
And then we also talked about property in 61A. But we don't know if, they have to take it out of 61A, is that correct?
Have to, has to, yeah, it has to, because this is.
Does anybody know if that has been done?
No, I think that's what, Zach, you said, where, what's the status of the 61A issue?
I don't have an update.
Okay. Mr. Chang, have you, have you alerted the assessor's office here that you want to take this land, remove this land from ag use?
Shouldn't I, shouldn't I wait until it's been, if it's approved or not?
Well, not theoretically. You're supposed to let the town know if, if there is, if there is an interest in this and, and if there's in effect a bona fide offer to remove the property from agricultural use. I would check with your attorney and our town council to make sure that you are doing this in the right step process. So I'm going to ask for a motion to, to continue this hearing to a future date.
I, I concur with that. I think it's a good idea.
I need, I can't make the motion. I'm asking for a motion to, to continue to a future date.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing for the Hatfield Community Solar Garden at Zero Main Street, based upon our previous conversations regarding the, the various questions, Conservation Commission, 61A setbacks, whatever else we talked about, probably 61A.
Pilot.
Right, so hopefully you've gotten down all of the things that we discussed tonight. We don't necessarily have to have all of them and we don't have to condition the continuation. So there's a motion to continue the hearing. Do I get a second? Okay. Motion's on the table, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it passes unanimously. So we will continue this and most importantly, the Conservation Commission and setback issues and 61A. All right, thank you. Michael, yes?
I know you've made your decision regarding the, the continuance. Wouldn't it be, make sense to put some sort of timeframe on when you would want to have more information?
Well, I suspect that, well, I know that Conservation Commission's meeting next week. 14th, I would suspect that Zach is going to want to be here at our very next meeting, which will be in the first Monday in March, so, or first Wednesday in March. So, yeah.
That's helpful for the community as well.
Yeah, because I think, yeah, because I think you're going to want to move this along and we're going to want to know where we stand on this as soon as possible.
And I'll share that information we talked about ahead of the next hearing.
That's right. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, do you want to?
You can take that.
We can, if you, we definitely. We can, if you, we definitely need one of these, because we're, because as it changes, it's good to be able to see how it changes, so.
You need one more? I got one here.
Some of these.
You need another one?
I don't want this one.
No, I was going to say, if people want to keep them, that's fine, if they can be helpful to you, but we're going to keep them so we can continue to see how it changes, so.
Right.
Okay, I'll do this.
Okay, all right.
Does, does Donna have a mailbox here? She asked me to bring some envelopes for the others.
Oh, actually, you can give them to me, because I will put them in the box for her. Okay, all right.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Zach, yep. All right, I apologize for those of you who were here for the, the second hearing, we'll take that up now. Actually, some people have arrived since we passed around, there's a, if, where is the clipboard with the names? Okay, so has it made it all the way around? If you just arrived and need to sign in, if you would do so, that would be great. All right, so we have Tony Graves, care of Dr. Hauschka Skincare. Again, just for quick reference, I'm going to open the public hearing, we'll let the applicant or their representative make a presentation, we will then entertain any questions or any comments from supporters, and ask that questions be made through the board, we'll then ask for comments from opponents, and the board can ask questions at any time, either of the opponents, supporters, or the applicant. And then we will eventually, as we just did, close the public hearing and choose to make a decision, either to approve the project with or without conditions, reject the project, or like, as we just did on the previous hearing, continue it to another date. So I'm going to read the, the notice. Planning Board will hold a public hearing February 6th, Hatfield Town Hall. The applicant, Tony Graves, care of Dr. Hauschka Skincare, is seeking a special permit with site plan approval from the Planning Board pursuant to Section 30, subsection 4.18, for professional business, less than 15,000 square feet of the town, in the town of Hatfield zoning bylaw, at 79 Main Street, owned by the Roman Catholic Bishop of Springfield, a corporation sole of Springfield, Massachusetts, assessor's map, 221 Lot 103, Zone Town Center. For the purposes of a change of use from the existing church to business offices, minor architectural changes are prefer, are proposed, however, all other site features, including parking, curb cuts, sidewalks, site lighting, and landscaping will remain, and the complete application was available at the town clerk's office. So Tony, if you would like to.
Thank you very much. So I thought it was important first to kind of introduce who we were to the community, so you guys have an idea of who was coming in, and then Wright Builders and Berkshire Design will come up and discuss the project in more detail. So I'm Tony Graves, I'm the Executive Director of Operations for Dr. Hauschka Skincare. Put together a brief summary of who we are in our day-to-day operations. Dr. Hauschka Skincare is the leading, one of the leading natural skincare brands in the United States. We have been producing 100% natural skincare and cosmetics for over 50 years. The first products were developed in Eckwald in Germany, where we continue to manufacture and develop our products today. Our organization and our day-to-day operations, we support sales and marketing functions for distribution and retail channels across the United States. Our day-to-day operations consist of customer service, sales, marketing, education, IT, and financial support. We are not a retail environment, we are not open to the public, this is an administration office use only. All our logistics and light industrial work will remain in South Deerfield, in the warehouse in the industrial park, none of that will come to Hatfield. Our current staff consists of about 16 employees, I mean, any given day it can be eight to 12, as for instance, today there was 10 of us there, between personal time, vacation, and business travel, we're not usually out there at the same time. Our office hours are between 8:00 and 5:30, it's a staggered kind of commute into the office, a few of us are in at 8:00, a few come in at 8:30, and a few more at 9:00, and then they leave anywhere between 4:30, 5:00 and 5:30. So the input of traffic is kind of spread out throughout those hours. It is our goal to return our office back to the town of Hatfield, where we began and operated our organization at 59 North Street for 15 years before moving to South Deerfield in 2008. 79 Main Street offers us the opportunity to provide our employees with a beautiful and collaborative working environment in a desirable community. Our products are born from nature, we have the utmost respect for our environment and the world we live in, this will be reflected in our care of the renovation building and grounds at 79 Main Street. So I don't know if there's any questions about our day-to-day operations or who we are, we can get into that now or after, otherwise Mark and Jeff can come up and discuss the plan for renovation.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
It's a Monday through Friday operation?
Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And the hours again, you said, was?
We open the office at 8:00, and people come in between 8:00 and 9:00, depending on their function, customer service is staggered between like 8:00 and 8:30. I'm usually in by 8:00, and then people leave between 4:30 and 5:30, depending on their schedule.
Okay, Frank, why don't you continue with your, with your presentation?
Good evening, I'm Mark Ledwell, I'm with Wright Builders, and we've been engaged by Dr. Hauschka to, to renovate the property and the building. Basically, there's no, no impact, as Jeff will point out later, on the exterior, with the, with two exceptions, one, is there are stained glass windows which will be removed by the archdiocese. The archdiocese will, will remove and take, take the custody of, if you will, and care of any religious artifacts, any religious items, anything of significance, as they typically do when, in this, this kind of situation. There's that, and there will be some condensers, a couple of condensers small on the outside for, for air conditioning. Other than that, there will be nothing other than maintenance, some cleanup, repair, there will be some repairs, certainly of these dilapidated stairs that go down to the main street, and that's it, there's no addition, there's no other plans for that. Photos here, which I think everybody probably knows what this is like, last time here, I handed out some smaller.
Actually, before you leave the exterior, so will the steeple remain?
The steeple will remain, but the cross will be removed.
Okay.
Yeah. Here's a, here's a drawing that shows some of the exterior change, and it's really very, very little. You can see a window array that will be similar in each of these spots with the stained glasses removed. There'll be, there'll be offable windows, on the other side of them is the office space, and they provide that fresh air and ventilation, and then stucco panels, which are consistent with the, the rest of the design of the exterior of the building. So fairly simple, pretty simple, we have some materials, basically, things remain the same, and I know it's not, it is the purview of the board, but, but not necessarily the, the most remain thought, but we will be, we will be removing the pews, will remain, we will repurpose them into woodwork for the building, which is in keeping with both Wright Builders ethos of construction, as well as Dr. Hauschka, that's very important to them, to do that. The spaces will basically be reutilized, the sanctuary will be the main office space, what is currently classroom space and back of the, back of the church space will, will be, will be repurposed into things like an IT room for their computers and such, a break room downstairs for the, for the, for the workers, and a sort of a products demonstration area where Dr. Hauschka will do some, some light training.
It's really a large conference room.
It's a conference room.
We can have one or two estheticians come in and do one-on-one trainings.
And that's really it, we do plan to handle this building with great care, we know it's an important building, primarily as church, and then secondarily, the architecture is, by people I know well, I've worked with them before, Benaski Stein, and the architects have some significance in the valley, in both religious architecture and other residential and commercial architecture. So very familiar with their work, we are respecting it, and frankly, that's part of what has attracted a customer to the whole project in general, so. That's really it, pretty brief overview.
Was there another person that was going to make?
Yes, we have, Jeffrey Squire is here as well. So Jeff is, is Berkshire Design and a landscape, landscape architect who will present the site plan.
Thanks, Mark. And as, as Mark had indicated, we really have very few, many site changes of any significance to speak of. The existing driveway garage is going to remain, we are creating in the existing space that's there now, you have two designated visitor spaces and two accessible spaces, those will be stripped, but those will service the building, and then the, they're also going to, you know, take ownership of the parking lot across the street, which currently has 65 to 70 spaces in it. Again, they've only got 16 employees, so between, you know, the, the little bit of space that's out front for visitors, but the, you know, mostly the employee part and both will take place in that larger lot, I would imagine.
What that allows us is to make sure there's no on Main Street parking, it's all in the back in the parking lot.
Yeah, so there's approximately 70 parking lots.
More than us. If the church would only like to sell us half of the parking lot, we would.
What exactly are the dimensions of that lot? I see, I see the parking lot is 148 by 115, but what is the actual dimension, the actual dimensions of the parcel, if you will, itself?
The parcel itself, there is an area on here, yeah, I don't have the parcel size, it may be in the application.
Okay, but it's not, I mean, it's, it's obviously.
I mean, we're not, we're not, no changes are proposed over there, and I think, you know, it's more to demonstrate.
It's the existing, it's the existing church, right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And, and we can see on this aerial photo that you provided, which is there, that there are, there are trees, there are some, there is some foliage and some screening, if you will, of the parking lot right now from Day Avenue.
Correct.
Okay.
And so all of those will remain, as will any exterior lighting, you know, no changes are proposed in that regard. As part of the application, there were a number of waivers that were requested, just, again, stormwater management plan, erosion control plans, a lot of those items, I'm happy to run through that list, but on the second page of our cover letter, there was a number of waivers, just, you know, ten, I don't see any of those issues.
We'll have to address those. Okay, anything else on the, on the landscape?
I don't, I don't think so, I think it's, it's more aggressive, you know, any questions that might come up at this point.
Right, and we will have, does anyone on the board have any questions right now of any of the folks that have spoken so far? Okay.
I do have one, trash, trash service?
Currently, we, in our current building, and when we were in North Street, we worked with alternative recycling, although I do know they were just purchased by US, USA Waste, so we would have to discuss with them, and where was the appropriate place to have the trash.
I can't imagine, you wouldn't be generating a lot, you're not.
No, we don't now.
Mostly.
Like I said, most of, all of our industrial logistics is at the warehouse in the industrial park, so I would say maybe, probably the smallest container that we could get.
Okay, because this would be just for the use of the offices, any garbage and recycling and so on, and then, actually, you mentioned 16 employees, typically eight to 12 on a daily basis, because some people are out traveling, you also, and you talked about some of the, this gentleman from Wright Construction talked about some of the space and its utilization, you have trainings of, like, when you have a training.
Typically, we will have two to three aesthetics trainings a year that are on-site, and those can range from three to four estheticians coming in from either, whether they're local or from other parts of the country for some one-on-one training, and those are usually three-day trainings.
So at that point, you may have as many as 20 people there?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
I see that there's existing site lighting here, so there's going to be lights on and outside.
The lights that are already currently there, yes, we're not adding any additional lighting.
And imagine those would follow whatever business hours.
Right, correct.
So there wouldn't be security lights and things like that on during the, at night or whatever? Okay, so I'm going to ask, I think we'll open it up to the audience, and we can still ask questions throughout that. So is there anyone here in the audience who would like to rise in, in support of the project? Okay, having heard none, I'll, oh, is there a hand? Yes, okay, all right.
Now, as I said at the last meeting.
Is this to support the project?
For it.
Okay, can you come forward then and?
Please, I'm ready.
And then just, for the audience, just let us know who you are and where you are.
Mika, Eper pocket 89 Main Street. As you know, the church has been very special to a lot of people in this town, and after speaking with a number of people, we do support Dr. Hauschka's business coming in, it looks like a good use of the property. But at the last meeting, I was at, I raised the question on the zoning, did you look into that?
Yeah, it's, it's town center zoning, and this, and this type of use of this building with site plan review and special permit would be, I mean, it would have to go through the process we're going through, but it is, it's, it is potentially a use allowed in the town center zone.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on that? Give me a clearer definition on what you mean by that.
Okay, so in, in town center, we have, there are two zones, there's town center business and town center.
Just town center.
And this particular property falls in what's called town center. If it was, so just for example, I'll give you, so we're, we're looking at a, a less than, a small retail establishment, less than 15,000, or office building of less than 15,000 square feet. In town, actually, in town center and town center business, it, both, in both cases, it requires site plan review, and, but, would be, it's not allowed by Wright, but we have to review it and go through the process that we're going through.
All right.
Yeah.
One other question, let's say down the road, they decide to sell.
Right.
We back to square one again, some business wants to come in, they have to go before the board.
Yeah, so anytime, you know, I guess if, if Dr. Hauschka sold it to Mrs. Hauschka, and it was a new company, and there was no change whatsoever in the use, it, you know, we would probably still want to have them come in and discuss the project with us, because there may be some changes in terms of number of employees. If it's an entirely different business or a different business model, then they absolutely would have to come in for review. It should be pointed out that the lot right now is less than 45,000 square feet, so while this building, lot-wise, is sort of a pre-existing non-conforming use, it's only a pre-existing non-conforming use if it stays in some kind of institutional office, I mean, you couldn't put a house here, because it, the non-conforming pre-existing use is, it was, was a church or an institutional structure, it's not a home, I guess it was house of God, but not, you know, a house in a traditional sense. So if you don't mind me asking, what is, what is the purchasing price, I mean, what is, what is, if you can even just give us a ballpark of a?
We're in the mid-400s.
Okay, so even if somebody wanted to buy it, even if they could put a house there, they'd either be paying $400,000 for the property, only to then start a renovation of turning a church into it, or tearing it down and putting in a house?
No, I think what, what has come up is another business going in, depending upon what that business was.
Right, if another business were to come in here, they would have to come in and go through this. go through the same kind of process that we're doing now. Just like even when, for example, you mentioned Allied Waste, right?
Alternative recycling sold, USA Waste, I mean, previously.
Yeah, but previously.
It was a, it was a trucking company.
It was a trucking company, and alternative waste recycling went into the same space on West Street. They were required to come in to get a site plan review and special permit, because it was, while it was still a trucking business, it was an entirely different type of business, and we wanted the neighbors to be able to comment about air brakes and backup noise and, you know, the beeping sound and all that, and their hours of operation, and so, you know, that, they, they had to come in and go through the approval process with us, even though, you know, to the casual observer, it probably didn't look like a different business driving past it.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else want to make a comment in support of the project? Okay.
Mike Cahill, North Street. I just wanted to talk about the character and the nature of this, of this company. I actually consulted with the, with Dr. Hauschka Skincare some, almost 20 years ago, right, Tony?
Yeah, about that.
So obviously, Tony and I, Tony and I know each other.
Tony's 40 years old.
I'm actually 87.
He's been using Dr. Hauschka.
That's what their product, what it can do for you. But I, I just wanted to go on record here that the, the nature and character of this company is, is top-notch. They are, almost by definition, they're a natural product, they're, they are a naturally-focused company, they, they approach issues and problems holistically, very environmentally sensitive and focused, and my experience with them has been, has been, just, they're a wonderful place to, to work for people who, who have, who have worked there. I think they'll, they'll certainly add back to the community as they did 20 years ago when they were, they were on the upper end of North Street. So I consulted with them, our daughter Heather actually worked for, for Dr. Hauschka for 15 years perhaps, Tony?
A little over.
Yeah, and, you know, has nothing but good things to say about, about them as well. And so I just wanted to go on record that, you know, I think they would really be an asset to the, to the community and to that, and to that area.
Thank you. Okay, so are there, is there anyone who would like to, I'm gonna open it up for opponents to the project, and I'm gonna do so, actually, we did get a note from someone, from Joan and Peter Dubay of 17 North Street, who could not be here tonight, and they asked if this comment could be read into the record, so I'll go ahead and do that. Regarding a special permit for 79 Main Street, "We are concerned about business offices being allowed in a residential area of Main Street, it would be preferable to keep Main Street residential and not mix in businesses. Increased noise is a concern, too many businesses create uncertainty and potential for increased cars with pedestrians and bikers and residents would have, which pedestrians, bikers, and residents would have to deal with on a daily basis. The church parking crosses the sidewalk, which could pose increased danger for all, especially younger children going to school or library." And actually, that leads to a question that I'm gonna ask you. "We think it would be a mistake to allow for, allow a business to be allowed in an area of Main Street that's clearly a residential area." So that comment was submitted by Joan and Peter Dubay. On the subject of that curb cut across the sidewalk, what's this, what are the sightlines like there, and what, or is there any modifications that you feel that you need to make regarding that?
You're talking about out of the driveway or the?
Out of the, out of the parking lot, yeah.
I mean, in either case, with the exception of these trees, which I'm honestly, I presume they're within the, the property and not within.
Day Avenue as it appears on the map, yeah.
As a, as a town right away. But it's a, you know, it's a clear, it's a clear line of sight in either direction, provided the trees, you know, aren't blocking your vision to the, to the right, I guess, if you're pulling out. I, again, I don't know that it poses that much of an issue, because again, the, the road is so, Day Ave, Day Ave is so straight that, you know, the sightline in either direction is.
I think it's not so much to the road, their concern was to the sidewalk. Is there a sidewalk on Day? I'm not familiar with Day Ave.
There's a sidewalk crosses Day Avenue, perfectly similar.
Oh, up here. Oh, up here. Oh, okay, I thought.
Out on Main Street.
Out on Main Street, yeah, yeah, okay, all right, okay. I thought they were referring to crossing the sidewalk as you're coming in and out of the parking lot. This is crossing, coming out of Day Avenue as any car might have, or, okay. All right, is there anyone else, or is there anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this project in, as an opponent? Okay.
I'd like to address this.
Comments, yeah, sure.
Just, this is an, I did an unscientific survey on, on two afternoons between approximately 2:10 and 2:45, just to see, and I know it's in the wintertime, I didn't see any children riding, walking, parents, I didn't see one person walking down there. I did see one car go into Day Avenue. But between those hours, there was approximately 60 vehicles, three were school buses, they went up empty, and then two came back with kids in them, and 10 of those 60, or 12 of those 60 were basically contractor vans, you know, the, the small type van, people like, like Pachoric, Pachoric Electric, Ever, an EverSource van, a UPS van, and then, and the rest were vehicles, and I, and the, my, my sense was that the number of vehicles between that time were go, either going to the elementary school or to the high school to pick up children, get, to pick up the kids from, from school, because I did see a number of them coming back with, with children in the car. And I also live on Main Street, and every morning and every afternoon, there's a tremendous number of cars where the, coming around, coming from Maple Street down onto Main Street that are, that are bringing people, children into the school system. So I, I don't think that having 12 more, this is, again, this is just my own observation, that I don't think there's gonna be a tremendous increase of, of any traffic generated by 10 employees or 12 employees, 16 employees, because I'm sure some will probably carpool as well, but it was just, it was kind of interesting that, and I know it's not summertime or, you know, weather conducive to walking, but it, you know, nobody was walking, and I didn't see any kids, and you see a few kids walking, but I don't think they, they walk as much as they used to walk.
Children in Hatfield do not walk to school. How long have you lived in this town?
Well, a while, but I, I know. We saw that as a plus, by the way. Does?
So I just thought I'd share it.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. Does anybody in, in the audience, or you as applicant, or, or wanna say anything else?
Well, I, I would just like to say, I thank you for the time here, and I thank the community. I think this is part of what makes Hatfield community so special, is that everybody does take care of what's coming into the community, and that's why I believe it's such a desirable place. People care about what's here and how it's being developed, so as much as it's, you know, a laborious event to go through these processes, I think it's a worthy thing, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their time.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to close, or ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we should deliberate on this.
Point of order, is this, is this the second, is this the first hearing or the second one, like, am I able to vote on this?
You can vote on this.
Okay.
First one was more of an informational hearing.
Great.
Or was it?
Well, we've heard from a, a couple people, and I appreciate, thank you for coming again, and particularly in light of the comments that were made or raised last time, and it sounds like you did some surveying of, of your own, of neighbors. I mean, as I pointed out earlier, you know, the reuse and the repurposing of this building would be for something like this. I mean, it's hard for me to imagine, and again, it would be very difficult for someone to buy this, and if they wanted to use it as a house, they, I mean, it'd be, as again, the, the pre-existing non-conforming use is for an institutional use, and so, so what you're doing is appropriate, otherwise we would have a building that would, you know, not on the tax, or not, not generating much in the way of tax revenue, but also beginning to deteriorate right on Main Street. So for me, anyway, it seems like an, an appropriate reuse of that building, but we have to, I have to say, I, we, we need to address the, the waivers that they've requested, which of course, we can, we can do that regardless of how we eventually decide on the project. So I'm gonna just note that the, the waivers that they have requested are, on the typical building elevations, because the project does not propose any significant modifications to the building exterior, on the location of septic systems, water supply, stormwater, drainage systems, and other utilities, no changes are proposed to any of the existing systems, the drainage calculations and soil logs, again, no changes are proposed to the existing system or the footprint of the building, proposed landscape features, there's no changes, as was outlined tonight, of the current landscape features, location of proposed signs, the existing church sign will be removed, and no new ground-mounted sign is proposed. There'll be a small building-mounted sign adjacent to the front door, which will provide building identification, but no other signs are proposed, so they ask for a waiver on the location of proposed signs as such. Building elevations, the project does not propose any modifications to the building's exterior, other than those somewhat ornamental ones related to the windows. And plans for clearing and or stockpiling, and again, there's no modifications to the site plan as proposed. These are all 5.34A, and then in order 6, 8, 9, 11, 12, 14, and 15 of the requirements for a special permit submission. So can I get a, get a motion to, to as requested, waive these special permits, permit submission requirements?
I'll make a motion to waive those items, 5.3, 4, 6, 8, 9, 11, 12, 14, and 15, as outlined in the plan.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so the motion is on the, on the table, is there any discussion or comments by members on the board? Okay, all in favor of granting those waivers?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. So is there a, can I get a motion to approve the project for a site plan review and special permit for Dr. Hauschka Skincare Inc. as, as submitted to the planning board tonight?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion on the table to approve the proposal for a, as submitted by Dr. Hauschka Skincare site plan review and special permit. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Welcome to town.
Thank you very much. Welcome back.
Yeah.
Before we go, there is a, there's a 20-day appeal period?
Yes, there is a 20-day appeal.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Tony.
Good seeing you.
Yeah, good luck, okay. Oh, good, great, great, great.
You could check in with Wilma then on the necessary filing, necessary paperwork, is your Mylar here?
I believe so.
That, that is yours.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can sign this, but we're gonna need, is this the rest of yours?
No, that's, that's, that's. No, that's the solar.
That's the solar. I think we need more copies than this, though.
Well, I think we need a Mylar and seven copies.
Yeah. I believe they dropped, let me just check.
If they have them, we can, we can sign them tonight.
You want your copy, Paul? You want your copy? Dr. Hauschka.
Yeah, I know, I, I know. I just didn't see it.
We're taking, we're taking a short break, we have more items on our agenda to address, but the two hearings are, are completed. So, for Mike, yeah, for Mike and, and Stephanie, we've been working with, well, Ashley prior to Becky, right?
Yep.
On a accessory apartment bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, for the start of that? Okay, good. And, and then with Corinne.
Thank you.
On a, on modifications to our open space development bylaw. So, so we, we actually, we met with Ashley a number of times to, to put together and provide comments and adjustments, and so the, the last draft that we have reflects that input that we have provided over a couple different meetings.
Yeah, and I had one comment, and I made a, a minor change, which you probably would wanna discuss, because you may have discussed it before.
Okay.
And that was on the, the definition of attached building. And I'm not sure who, who sent me this comment, but it was, they had a problem with the building having any portion of one or more walls in common with or within five feet of an adjacent building, as that might be confusing.
I was the one that said it.
Yeah, so I don't know if you discussed the within five feet, because to me, it sounded like, you know, if it's within five feet, but it doesn't share a wall, it's not actually attached. So, you know, it seemed, it seemed like the solution to that would be to take out or within five feet of, or, you know, you could also say a detached building that is five feet. It looks like you, you crossed out that definition or, or had removed that before.
My only problem with it was if, supposing someone has a portico, and all of a sudden they say, well, this is within five feet of the portico, and which is within, you know, the other building, I want that, that attached to be there. You know, no three feet, no one foot, no nothing.
Yeah.
It's, it's attached or not.
Or detached, that seems to make sense to me.
Right, right, that's it, yeah.
You got two properties on one, two, two pieces, two houses on one lot.
On one lot, yeah, and all of a sudden, you got an apartment winged in there, right? Whoa, we can do it within five feet. No, you can't do it within five feet, it's gotta be within the confines of the other building.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, you can, you know, you can have a bylaw with detached.
You could, yeah, but in this, in this instance here, we're talking about, you know, keeping that all in that one.
And we had chosen not to allow detached.
Right, and we had already turned some people down.
Right.
That wanted to do that, okay, so you gotta be consistent in your.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So, so the solution to this then would be just to be, so it would be a building having any portion of one or more walls in common.
With an adjacent.
An adjacent building, yeah, right.
Okay.
And we're, we're taking out that within five feet.
Yeah.
The or within five feet.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, and that was the only comment that I received.
Yeah, and I apologize that I didn't send in, I have a, I have a couple questions, and then if others have after, and Stephanie hadn't had a chance, I think is new to the board, so. In section 1.3I, and this is referring back to our section 5.7 of the town zoning bylaw, at least two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit and one space for guests are available for use by the owner, occupants, and tenants. The one space for guests, is that one space per dwelling unit or one space for the entire building, the, the structure? And so I wanted to make sure we're clear on that, that it seemed to me, because you could have a guest for the main house.
Right.
And then you could have a guest for the accessory apartment.
Right.
That's not, you know.
That's not clear, yeah.
Yeah, and so I want, because it, because it says two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit and one space for guests, so I.
So how many total?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm looking at six. My interpretation is six.
Is six, but this could be construed.
It's five, right.
So I think it should read at least two off-street parking spaces and one space for guests per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit, right.
The per dwelling unit just needs to be moved to the other side of the spaces.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, disposal works, construction permit.
So I had a question on the 1.6, the accessory apartments in existence before the adoption, to sort of get them up to state building code regs. Do you all have any recommendations for us on how we actually get that? Is that, would that be the building inspectors? Would that be a job that we would then detail to the building inspector? I mean, it seems like that would take a significant amount of work and inspection to go in and review all of that. I'm not suggesting that we don't have it in here, but I just was hoping that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, maybe, you know, as we move forward, and if this gets adopted, could give us some best practices for how to actually make this happen.
I can look into that, yeah.
So are we going to require that the, that the, that the single-family dwelling, the house that the apartment is attached to, is that going to have to be brought up to code as well? Or is just the apartment going to be brought up to code under this number?
1.6.
A.
I think it's the accessory apartments are brought up to code.
Yeah, that's the application. I can look into that. I don't, you know, I don't know what other towns have done. Generally, you know, it only gets brought up to code if there's a, if there's an application for a permit, you know. I don't know if you can go in after that.
Yeah, I mean, this is an after-the-fact.
This is after the fact.
And it also is not only to get it up to state building code regs, but also to then get them in the same process of having the notarized declaration that someone who, that one of the dwelling units is actually, that the owner resides in, owner occupied in one of the dwelling units, so.
Yeah.
Which is well laid out and articulated for new accessory units, but this is to sort of bring those that preexist up to the standards in this new code.
Do you know how many are preexisting? Do you have a sense of?
You haven't yet, Paul?
If it wasn't allowed before in zoning.
How many two families or multis?
No, no, the accessory apartments.
Oh.
Accessory apartments.
I mean, are there some, and if so, when were they built? Or were they built before zoning here?
Geez, I.
Well, the only one that's come before the board.
There's only one or two that I know of.
The only one that's come before the board since I've been on it was Mark Gelot.
Yeah.
And that was, he wanted actually.
The lady that writes the cookbooks?
Yeah, I wasn't on the.
Lisa Ekis.
Yeah.
Yeah, she wanted one.
Ekis, they have one. Well, they built it, they wanted the approval.
Would that information be available through the assessors' office?
It might be.
Yeah, possibly, or there must be a zoning permit in the file.
Most of them that were done, were done under the building inspector now, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so he should know.
He should know that if there was one.
Yeah.
That it was up to code, and the previous statement was about the codes. He would be in there before, we would be in there, to make sure that they were up to code.
Right.
State code, Hatfield code, whatever.
Right. Yeah, and if it's a, if it's a, this might fall also under preexisting nonconforming use, so that you might not be able to go back.
Yeah, you might not be able to find them, okay? You could go up Main Street, and there's probably 35 or 40 of them, but they were back, you know, 50, 75, 80 years ago, when they converted and brought people in here to help, okay?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a slippery slope when you get into that kind of stuff. Because I've been there, done that.
Yeah, so.
Can you look into that and give us some additional thoughts on that? Okay.
Would it be possible to, you work with other towns? What they ran into, or?
Yeah, I'll look, yeah, we have, we have some model bylaws, but yeah, I don't think I have seen, you know, that you have to bring.
Both.
Pre-existing ones into conformance. Yeah, I will look into that.
I like it.
Okay, so are there any other comments or questions for Becky on this? Because you'll look into this, we need to actually, we're going to have to set up a schedule. If we're in agreement, which we don't have to necessarily make that decision tonight, but if we're in agreement on moving this bylaw to the town meeting, we have to set up a schedule soon with Wilma for public hearings prior to town meeting. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Yeah.
And I think you can have a joint public hearing with the town council? Have you done that, or do you usually have separate ones?
No, we can do that, we can have it, we can do it as a joint hearing.
Yeah.
And, but, so.
We have to have a public hearing before it goes to the town meeting.
Right.
Right.
And it needs to be a certain amount of time, and Wilma's got all that schedule, that sort of gap, and we're well within it now, but we do, are going to need to set those up soon.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll look into this right away. But we'll probably have to discuss this at your next meeting, so that you can adopt it.
Yeah, because I don't think you're going to be able to get into April. If you get into April, I think you're too tight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I mean, this will take a long time.
It's got to be done in March, that best, yeah, at worst.
So I'll look at, yeah, I'll look at what other towns have done on that.
Okay, all right, so are there any other questions for Becky or comments on the accessory apartment bylaw?
Nope.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Corinne?
Hi. I brought copies as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I lost it, I've got one.
Okay. This is slightly different from the last one I sent you, but it's more just that I elaborated on some comments that I had already made.
Okay.
I had a hard story to as well.
Thank you.
And then I brought extra copies in, I don't know if you wanted to share them with Board of Health members?
Yes, okay.
For Wilma. So this is a little different in that it's a existing bylaw in Hatfield, and these are revisions that PBPC is suggesting after conversations with the planning board, other communities that have adopted open space development bylaws by any other name, and reviewing model bylaws, talking with Massade Ban, et cetera. So I am happy to go through this in several different ways. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to formulate questions. We can just go through and answer questions, or we can go through the suggested revisions point by point, if that's more helpful.
Have you all seen this before?
Yeah, Wilma sent copies, oh, actually, you.
I haven't seen this before.
You haven't seen that one before, okay, all right. Yeah, so we were working with Corinne, actually, before Ashley came in, we were working with Corinne on this. So the idea is, just as Corinne just mentioned, and sort of elaborated a little bit, is we do have a current open space development bylaw. It's only been used once so far, and it's, I think, as we discovered when we applied it, it was a little clunky, to say the least. But also, so this cleans up a lot of what's, and makes some revisions to the existing bylaw to sharpen it a little bit, make it a little bit more specific in many regards. The other major change is that it changes the open space development as a by right, in other words, as an option.
Yeah.
And turns it into the de facto way that any future subdivision would occur.
Within specific zoning districts.
Yeah, and of certain sizes.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and so at our last planning board meeting, I had asked the question of, one of the problems with the existing bylaw is that it's allowed by right, but there's not, I don't think there's any incentive for it, because there's not any increased density allowed denser than the underlying zoning. There's no density bonuses, there's no reduction in lots, well, there was a dimensional reduction for, in some cases, and not all cases. And so basically, one thing that I, the biggest thing that I've learned in talking with other communities is that the only way that open space development or cluster developments are bought into is if they're either de facto or if there's some pretty heavy carrots offered. So at the last planning board meeting, we had decided that any, or Hatfield had decided that any subdivisions or residential developments of three or more within these zoning districts would be de facto open space development as opposed to conventional subdivision.
So since not all of the board members have had a chance to read through this, we can, we want to give you time to do that and be able to comment on specific things. I do have, I did, I have had a chance to go through it because of just having spent some more time since we started these negotiations and conversations with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So why don't I go through some of the things that I've noted in here?
Sure. If I could just first really quickly say, I realize I didn't mention this before, I'm sure many of you are familiar with track changes in Microsoft Word, but all of the black text was existing in Hatfield's current bylaw. Red is added and/or moved. I've tried to note where language was preexisting, but I moved it, and so it's showing up red. And then the green areas are areas that I've highlighted for comments to consider.
One more?
Yeah, sure.
We're shooting for this for May as well?
We'd like to, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so one thing, just on the definitions under common driveway, we refer to the, I want to make sure that it isn't confused, that this doesn't get confused, and that we're referring to the common driveway bylaw when we refer to the use of common driveways in an open space development. And we're saying that a common driveway, in this case, could be used for more than one, but not more than six residential lots. Whereas our common driveway bylaw that we strictly use is no more than three.
Oh, okay, and is that, is that Section 5.8 of the zoning bylaws?
Yeah, I'm going to have to look, but I think it is.
Because I had cross-referenced that, so that might have been my omission here in this draft.
Yeah, so if you could, if you could go back and look at that, because we do have, and that is no more than three.
Sure.
Common driveway. Under definitions, and then there's a couple of different places where this falls, I would recommend for the definition of agricultural soils, this is on page three. Since the definition actually uses the, the definition itself actually uses the term prime, I would like to, I would prefer that the definition just be agricultural soils.
Okay.
And then the definition read agricultural land with soils designated as prime, comma.
Okay.
Statewide or local significance, because there is a local designation for ag soils, and the Ag Commission, which I happen to also serve on, is going to be working with NRCS to actually delineate our local soils for other reasons, that we want to have potentially more properties eligible for the APR program, so we're going to be doing some designation of local soils.
Yeah, that's great.
So there's a couple of places throughout which I'll highlight where you use, refer to agricultural land, and we just want to do it consistently.
Okay.
So that'll say prime statewide or local significance. In applicability, Section 4, or item number four, uses permitted in the open space, in the open space of an open space district or development include an E is accessory uses customarily incidental to any permitted use. Can you give me an idea what you mean by that?
Yeah, so first I'll just clarify that any permitted use is any permitted use within the open space, not permitted use within the underlying zoning district or open space developed area. So for, I am not recalling which section it is in the original bylaw, and hopefully, that's in the back, but that's going to probably be in crossed-out areas. Hatfield's existing open space development bylaw allows up to three buildings for agricultural use, for example, to be allowed in the open space. So this particular list here, under four, doesn't mention buildings under the agricultural uses.
Well, actually, it does in A, it says in buildings related to the same.
Oh, you're right, it does, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, so for agriculture, I thought that was duplicative.
Yeah.
And that made me wonder what else might be an accessory use for any of these other, I know there's a public park or recreation area, so could that be like a, if it's a public park, if there's a.
I'm going to have to go back and look at my notes for that section, but I am imagining that my intention there was to provide for those up to three buildings, so whether that might be a shed in a park.
Right.
But I can definitely provide examples with an E to set the tone.
Okay, that'd be great. In the list of, in the application requirements under two, well, actually, in, basically, in all cases during the application process, where you list the committees to be identified or, and to review an application, if you could also add in Agricultural Advisory Commission.
Okay. And what did you think about adding the open space?
No, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and in fact, there's, you know, there's a couple of places where the Ag Advisory Committee wouldn't be as involved, I mean, if it was all woodlands, for example, or something like that, but the open space committee would be interested and involved regardless of the type of land that's affected by the development.
Okay.
So there's a couple of different places where that makes sense. In, so just as an example, Corinne, in four, four B, here's a case where you would, location and limits of soil types particularly. Here, I would just, I would just say location and limits of soil types, particularly agricultural soils, because again, you've got the definition back, which would include prime, state, and local. So we don't need to necessarily specifically, in this case, say prime. We would cover all three of those categories.
Okay.
Okay, there's a couple of other places where AgCom would fit in. Okay, so again, unless someone else has something that they want to jump in on, I'm just going to go through a couple of other things that I caught. Okay, in Section Dimensional Standards, 6.28, allowed density under A. In no case shall the number of OSD dwelling units exceed the number of units that would be allowed under a conventional subdivision. You made, you had a comment, this works because OSD is de facto in this draft. If it remains by right only, we'll need incentive, okay, so, but we're operating under the.
Yes, and I just wanted to, last time we met, there were, it wasn't a full planning board, so I wanted to make sure that that decision remained the same before I just wrote the bylaw that way.
Just below that, in Flexible Dimensional Controls, the frontage of the parcel from which lots of an open space development are created, whether or not by subdivision, shall equal or exceed 60. by subdivision, shall equal or exceed 60 feet for each lot created in the open space development. And then in the second one, it says, second, number two, it says, "In the interest of flexibility and creative site designs and provided that all other requirements of this bylaw are met, there shall be no frontage required for individual lots on new subdivision streets within an OSD, with the exception described in 6.253 below."
Yes.
So can you explain all of this? This got confusing to me.
Sure. So what that means, what one means, which is probably pretty clear, is that the, for each lot created in the open space development, the frontage, there has to be 60 feet of frontage, and this is from your original bylaw as well.
Right.
On the existing public street from the parcel that's going to be subdivided. So let's say they're subdividing into four parcels. On the existing public street, there needs to be at least 240 feet of frontage. But within the subdivision, once new streets are created, there's not a minimum frontage that needs to exist for the parcels that are located off of the new streets.
Okay.
Does that make more sense? Does that clear?
What's I get the density?
Okay.
Yeah, so you're only counting the frontage ones, basically, and that's on the existing street.
Okay, so that's just the frontage of the parcel, meaning the frontage on the, on the, on the public way. Okay. And then for each lot developed along a public street, existing at the time of the application, the minimum frontage, minimum lot size, and all other dimensional controls shall be those which are required in the underlying zoning district. So that's where I get confused, because three would suggest that it's got to be 200 feet.
Yeah.
Whereas one suggests that it's 60 feet for the houses that are along the public way, whereas three seems to suggest the houses that are along the public way have to meet the minimum requirement, which would be 200 feet of frontage.
What three is suggesting is that, and so again, three...
Can I ask a question? Didn't you say that for one, it would be, in your example you just used, it would be 60 times four, so it would be 240?
Yep.
So that's greater than the 200.
But it's also four units.
Four units.
It's four units.
Right.
Whereas this one is suggesting that each lot, at the time of the application, the minimum frontage and all other shall be those as required, so then there would be only one, because it'd be 200 feet, right?
So we might have to draw an example here, so we can know what we're talking about, but I'll try with words first. So there's the existing public right-of-way, then there's a subdivision that's created off of the existing public right-of-way with subdivision streets.
Right.
So as we just described in one and two, for every parcel that's created, that's, for every lot that's created from the original parcel, there needs to be at least 60 feet of frontage on the public right-of-way. It does not count on the private right-of-ways, we don't care about the private right-of-ways.
Oh, okay.
And then what number three is saying is that if, this is assuming that the parcels are created off of the new streets. So what number three is saying, if you're also creating and building homes along the public street that are adjacent to the public existing right-of-way, then those have to have basically the existing character of the underlying zoning. So it doesn't touch on the houses that are off of the new private right-of-ways.
Okay, so if we have a, so, okay, so let's go back to your original example. So there's 240 feet of road frontage on, on a public way. At a minimum, that gives the developer four units back off of a subdivision road that they punch in that goes into the back part of the property.
I would say at a maximum.
At a maximum.
Yes.
They can get four units, and then they could get, if they only need 40 feet for the road, let's just say for sake of argument, they only need 40 feet for the sake of the road, they could, and if they have enough land area, they could put one house out on the main road. So that project potentially could have as many as five units.
If, yes, as long as the underlying zoning would have originally allowed for five units within the area.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Density, you mean?
Sorry.
The density of five units.
Yeah, the density, yeah. And, and so the, the provision, the purpose of three is to basically either keep with the character that's existing on this public right-of-way, this imaginary public right-of-way, or if this is a relatively undeveloped public right-of-way, there's no character to keep, but it still maintains that distance that was originally, you know, the spacing, the density that was originally decided.
Yeah, this way you're not getting 60-foot lots, 60-foot frontage lots out on the main public way, they're on the...
They're behind.
Street off the main.
And the bylaw itself as well also calls for, to the extent feasible, developing the majority of the site away from the view of the public right-of-ways, and also either keeping or creating vegetated buffer screening, visibility screening between the public right-of-ways. So there's, the bylaw is clearly stating a preference to not be developing right along the public right-of-way, but if you do, you have to keep it with the existing zoning.
Yeah, you know, so I had a question about that in number four, because it's to the extent feasible. What's sort of interesting is, is that in Hatfield and Hadley and Whately, certainly along the river, the, the traditional development pattern was to actually have the farm ground in the back, behind the house.
Right.
So that you could access the water, and then your house was close to the road, and so, you know, it would seem to me that, I like that you've added to the extent feasible, because it could be that a well-designed development might actually, in keeping with the character of town, have, have it in reverse from, in other words, you'd have the houses closer to the main road and the farm ground in the back, because that's how it's sort of laid, that's, you know, if you drive down our main street, well, from Elm Street all the way through Maple into Main, that's pretty much the development pattern. If you sneak your eye through there, you can see almost every one of those houses on either side of the road, until you get right up on the main street, have farm ground in the background. You know, we don't have so much farm ground on this side of Main Street, but on the other side of Main Street, almost every house has farmland behind it.
We could, so the, much of the language about landscape buffers and developing away from the road, the sightlines of the road was existing in your current open space development bylaw? If it's something that you really feel like you want to have, this says to the extent feasible, if it's something that we want to open up even more and have it be, you know, site-by-site decision, we can take you out to the extent feasible and, and put something along the lines of depending on site conditions or site development, or depending on the purpose of the, or the use of the open space, et cetera. Would you prefer to see something like that?
Yeah, I think so. I think so, because I'm also thinking about, and you address this later in the document, that we may find, not that we have an extensive amount of APR land, but we do have APR land in town, and we may have more in the future, that if some of these developments occur, we're going to want to position the farmland protected in the developments adjacent to the adjacent far, you know, to the other farmland.
Yes.
And it could be that that, to do that, which is probably more important than where the houses are, we're actually going to be wanting to position the houses closer to the road based on the setting of the adjacent property, and its, and its, and its use, and its protection status.
Okay. Yeah, and that is accounted for in the draft later on, so that's a good point.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. Okay, so I had a question about required open space. All land not used for building lots, but not less than 50% of the total parcel area shall be placed in permanent open space in accordance. What about, there's a discussion in here about the common area, there's, there's open space, and then there's also common area that might be utilized by the homeowners, you know, like maybe for a sitting area, or, you know, where they can, you know, have a volleyball court or something like that, that is not counted in the open space calculation, right? And we don't, we're not going to require, nor would we want to have some kind of easement on that, where we're actually going out there and saying, well, no, you can't, you know, have horseshoes out here, you can only have, you know, I mean, we want to reduce the amount of stewardship that goes into these things. So I just want to make sure that it's really clear to us and to you, and then potentially a user here, that there's, there's the development, there's the protected open space, and then there's also common areas, right? I have that right?
Yeah. And so the common areas, the, the open space is integral, right, to, to the open space development. The common areas, in my interpretation from my conversations that I've had with other communities, is that the common space, like, as defined in the definitions, may or may not happen. So the, the, if there's, if the open space is designated as a recreational area that's a park essentially, there might be, well, I don't, the facilities would even be included in that. I think that, and I was going to suggest like a shed or a, et cetera, but I think that that would be included in the three buildings that would be allowed as part of the open space. So the common space, from my understanding, is for utilities, and in the event that, some bylaws don't allow the aggregate nitrogen land to be used as part of the open space. And so in that case, that would be common area, it's commonly owned, it's commonly used for nitrogen land, but it's not counted as the open space. I have drafted this to include the nitrogen land as part of the open space, and that was a trade-off that I made in this draft, because the original bylaw said 40%, not 50%. And so rather than just increasing the, the open space and not allowing for a trade-off, I guess, I, I thought that, I thought that was a good trade-off. So I included the, I don't think that I ever use the, the term common area in the bylaw itself, but I included the definition in the event that some design would include common utility areas, I guess. And so would you, do you think it would be helpful to either include examples in that definition, or would you like to have the common area spelled out more in the, in the bylaw itself?
Do we need to be that specific? I mean...
Well, I think we need to provide some guidance anyway.
Do you think it's, so are you, do you think that one potential reading of this would be that there's 50% requirement open space?
50% common.
Then there's all of the undevelopable land that can't be counted towards open space.
Right.
Then there's the developable land, and so then there might be, do you think someone might have the impression that there's a requirement towards common space? Is that, is that one of the fears?
Yeah, or that the common space may be considered part of the opens, the protected open space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to look into that a little bit more and see if there's any other way to, like, any other way that other communities are using that.
Okay.
That I haven't accounted for, but I, oh, when I send you the next revision, I'll have addressed that, I think.
All right. Yeah, I know the hour is getting late here, so in section, site design standards, section four.
Okay.
Under soils, you just need to update that, because not only do we want to make sure that it's consistent, in fact, here it says prime farmland soils and soils of state and local importance, but also it utilizes the, the old name for NRCS, it says US Soil Conservation Service.
Oh, yeah, that was my mistake, sorry.
I think that was in our original draft, because it was...
I probably just moved it over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that I understand this. Under common open space, land protection methods for common open space, the land shall be owned by nonprofit land trust or conservation organization, homeowner's association, or an individual, and a permanent conservation easement or deed restriction must be conveyed to the town. So I want to just see, this is how I would potentially see a project happening, but I want to make sure that this is either allowed, and if it's not, I'd like to, you know, at least have us consider it. So you develop an open space project that includes, it's a big one, so you're going to leave 50 acres of farmland, is going to be protected as a part of this open space development with a permanent easement on it, and you've got, you know, the number of houses that went along with it. By allowing for that land to be owned by an individual, because you, as a developer, sell that protected farmland to Bernie to own and farm, so that it's no longer connected even with this...
Open space.
I mean, it's open space, it's got an easement on it, but it's not even, I mean, basically, the homeowners, some of the homeowners, two or three owners down, may not even know that the farmland behind them was part of the reason that they could get the house where they have it.
That is true, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So unless, unless the land becomes owned, if, so if the, if the open space is going to be used for agricultural use or forestry, unless it is owned by a land trust that then rents out to a farmer, or has like some sort of community farming program, et cetera, that is what the individual provision is in there for.
Okay.
Is to continue that use, basically. So if, if, is Bernie a, are you Bernie?
Yes.
Okay. So if Bernie owns his farmland, and he decides, I can make some money selling off some of this farmland, but one, I want to continue my livelihood, and two, it would be a shame to lose all of this farmland that's, you know, basically, it's like a historic use in Hatfield, then he could save his 50 acres, you know, to continue, and then the other, however many acres that gets served into farmland, he would be, continue to be the owner of that in the, in this case. Or the developer could buy all of it and then sell it to another individual, Bernie's cousin.
But, yeah, so I guess the, the reason I wanted to just make sure, I wanted to make sure that that was a possibility, because, you know, if it is farm ground, having a homeowner's association own it and lease it to a farmer is, you know, if, if that's what happens, that's what happens, but that's a potential prescription for, you know, major headaches between the farmer and the homeowner's association. So if the land, once protected as part of the development, can be sold to a totally unrelated individual to own it as farmland and farm it, we're allowing that by having this individual in here.
Yeah, and I had...
That's got to be by deed, though. I don't think you can just willy-nilly, you know, sell off 50 acres. I think that's got to be by deed upfront, that everybody knows that there's a possibility that that 50 acres is going to be sold, or may be sold somewhere down the line.
Right, but it would have a permanent easement on it, and because it would be part of the, so the development would, that would be the open space that's associated with the development.
With the development, okay.
And in this case, it has a permanent easement on it, which is recorded with the county records.
Right.
But rather than having the developer continue to own it, or a homeowner's association of the people that are in the development, they sell it to one of the farmers in town.
There's got to be some provisions in there of, you know, like, your fence is only 12 feet high, you're driving, it's, there's got to be, it's got to be a real written-down, very easy-to-understand situation, I think.
And I see that also as a potential opportunity to keep, keep farm, or farmland affordable for someone to purchase, knowing that it has that easement on it.
So I, I haven't seen this in any of my research, but I think you make a good point about potential negotiations between a homeowner's association and a farmer, just like two, you know, two entities which don't necessarily have any understanding of each other.
Right.
It, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be possible, although I would probably want to check in with a few people, to sort of qualify when different ownership of the open space is appropriate. I don't know if you would be interested in going that route, but you could, you know, we could maybe say that if the open space is going to be maintained as a recreational area, then homeowner's association is appropriate. If it's going to be maintained as working agricultural or forestry lands, then that's when an individual owner is appropriate, or a land trust. Is that something that you think would, and then on the opposing side of that, one of the ways that open space development seems to be the most useful and successful with communities, it's when it's the most flexible and the least prescriptive, and it just allows for a lot of negotiation between all the parties. So that being said, do you think you would be interested in that type of enumeration of ownership, I guess?
Well, so, we, as long as, and, you know, we're going to... Well, so, we, as long as, and, you know, we're gonna wanna have town council, but as long as it says, as it does, nonprofit, conservation, homeowner's association, or individual.
Yep.
We're in a situation where we could condition the approval of the whole project by saying that once the open, once this is all done, and the easement is in place, that the property be sold to a farmer.
That's what I'm saying, you gotta do something upfront, or don't do it.
Yeah.
You know, let it loose and let it see how it goes as it goes, or everything's gotta be written down upfront, one way or the other. It can't be, it can't be all of a sudden, five years down the road, somebody says, well, we just sold off the back piece, five, you know, 50 acres, what? You know, I bought this property to make sure that Bernie wasn't on my 50 acres, right? See, Bernie's taking a brunt of this.
Because I think, because I think the other issue is, is that we may have a property where, you know, the open space is sort of an amalgamation of some woodland, maybe some natural area, you know, wetland, or area that's, you know, good wildlife.
Right.
Habitat, and then a little bit of farm ground. Well, I mean, maybe that just gets owned by a homeowner's association, because the amount of farmland, it's probably not worth it to sell it, and it's got all this other land, you're not gonna wanna subdivide off the woodland and stuff. But if it's, we have enough properties out there that are, you know, 25, 30, 40 acres of just flat farm ground, and if they're gonna get developed, and we can develop them in a way like this, that leaves, you know, 15 or 20 acres of that open. To me, having, you know, worked in this industry in farmland protection for many years, it would, I know from the farmer's perspective, it would be much better to just, let me own it.
Yeah.
It's got an easement on it, let me own it. And, you know, the homeowners, they don't have to worry about it anymore.
Yeah, right. No, no, I understand, there's a lot of good there.
They don't have to worry about chasing a farmer for a lease payment, or anything like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay. So I know we have a, I wanna get into one other, two things that, because I know that the hour is late, and I appreciate, we have to get you in here, where we don't have two hearings. Under open space, additional requirements, number, it's getting towards the end, 3B, open space, where there is an existing network of open space, or large tracts of unfragmented, blah, blah, blah. The, may connect to existing open space where feasible with the required open space set aside, and shall grant the general public access to this open space. I think that should say, and when appropriate, may grant the general public access to this open space in perpetuity, that we just, because there's gonna be some properties where you just don't want it to be assumed that you're gonna allow public access. So I'd like to make that a little more qualified.
Okay.
Can you just explain to us the table of use, the dimensional table of use? Because I think this is where it really gets the...
So, all right, so this is, what you see is the existing table of use, and then, again, the red is where I've made some changes. So first, I will just say that the only place where there's red, there is a discrepancy in your existing bylaw, where the frontage requirement for all of these districts is 60 feet, as we've already discussed, and that's stated in the narrative section of the bylaw, and the table, it was listed as 80. So that's the only time that 80 comes up. I think, unless anybody has a reason why they would prefer 80, I think 60 is more appropriate, and 60 is also what I've been seeing in other open space development bylaws. So that's that. So then, the two other highlighted areas, the 30,000 square feet in the minimum lot area for rural residential and outlying residential districts. As I say in the comment here, the minimum lot area in rural residential and in town center for open space development is more than half of the underlying minimum lot area in rural residential and town center, whereas in outlying residential and agricultural is exactly half. And so just doing some rough math, I'm not, I, you know, one thing is, is that, I'm, I am not a real estate developer, and I don't have a sense really of real estate economics, but doing basic math, if we assume a lot, a parcel of certain size, and you say that the allowed density under open space development...
Is less.
Is...
60.
Yeah, sorry, I lost my train of thought. So basically, when it's, when it's less than half, or I'm sorry, when the, when the minimum lot area is greater than half, so 30,000 to 45,000 square feet versus 30,000 to 60,000 square feet, the open space development comes out in a, in a wash. You lose one to three parcels, depending on the size, one to three lots, depending on the size parcel that you're subdivising, subdividing based on the different size parcels that I was pretending existed. So originally, my point was that if open space development is by right, that's a reason not to do open space development, that's a reason to just do conventional subdivision.
Yeah.
Because we're proposing making open space development de facto, as opposed to by right. On the one hand, that, you might say that doesn't really matter, they have to do it this way, we're saying they have to do it this way, but you're opening yourself up to conflict with potential developers, and also pushing development towards the two districts where it is exactly half. And then also, one thing that I heard, you know, at a planning board meeting a while ago, is that Hatfield wants to be attracted to developers. So I think if we're going to make this de facto, we also have to make it appealing as well. So it's not, it's not necessarily just like a stick, as opposed to a carrot and a stick. So the, the potential problems here are if there, if these areas are not served by town sewer, and if the areas are on private drinking water wells. So what I'm suggesting is reducing the minimum lot area in open space development to exactly half of what the underlying zoning is, no matter what the district, and making up for the reduction in lot size in regards to septic requirements by making use of aggregate nitrogen land, or... And so, in the event where the lots would rely on private drinking wells, that would be a concern, and that might not end up being the best site for an open space development, or maybe a development at all. But much of the town, I believe from a previous mapper, mapping exercise that PBPC did with paper maps from Hatfield, I believe that much of the town is on town water, correct?
Well, certainly, the area...
This area, yeah.
In this area of town.
Main.
The area where you probably have the most potential development.
So, so if, if drinking water, if contact between septic systems and drinking wells is not an issue because town water is supplied, then, I was on the phone with Mass D E P with Tan Singh, and had a long conversation with her, and came to the understanding that nitrogen land credit, which is already part of the open space development, that's on the board here, or that's existing here, is allowed. You can load as much land, as much nitrogen land credit as you want in the open space development, as long as there is no other man-made nitrogen being put into the grounds there. So that is just part of Title V, it's state law already. So the, I called Charlie Knickie to ask him what his opinion was of this, and I think that this is just further conversation that needs to happen between the planning board and the health agent, and the Board of Health potentially. My understanding is that Hatfield has adopted the state Title V requirements, and has not gone any stricter than that, so this is, this is legal, but it's just something that the town hasn't already, you have never done before, the Board of Health has never permitted before. So you would want to make sure that you're both on the same page with what this means, and address any concerns that the Board of Health has. I have limited hours left in this project. I have, I think about, after tonight, somewhere between 10 and 15 hours left to take this through to town meeting. I don't have a lot of time to work with the planning, or the Board of Health on this. I'm happy to be part of any conversations, but I think that really this is going to come down to aligning permitting between the two boards. And basically, to ensure that everybody's on the same page, that public health, you know, standards are being met. Did you have any specific questions about it, or?
Well, I think it raises the issue for the board to think about this, the, well, for, to, whether or not we allow for these particular lots in these two areas to go to half of, you know, what would otherwise be allowed, to basically encourage the use of this. I'd also note, Corinne, that the minimum common open space, we want to change that to 50, because you said 40 now.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And then the other thing, and I think we'll let, we should let, unless people have other, is the very last page of Corinne's document has optional sections, and I'd like the board to really look at those and think about that, and to see if we want to allow for any of these density bonuses.
I have a question for C. What would be considered, like, would a tobacco barn be considered a historic structure?
Well...
Not necessarily historic, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, it could be. I mean, some of our, I mean, it depends upon, we have a number of tobacco barns in town, we have a number within historic districts in town. I don't know if one of them is like, you know, is, is more historic than another because it's associated with a particular individual, or maybe the first type of kind that uses a certain slat pattern or something, I don't, I don't know, that'd be something to ask the historical commission. But anyway, so these, these other increases in permissible density, depending upon how, you know, they add to the amount of open space, or if they involve community housing, or if they have a historic structure, I think we should think about those and decide if we want to incorporate that into our, into the bylaw.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
So I will make the changes that we talked about today, and if, in the meantime, I handed you two my cards, I hope that you, yeah, and you can share my email address if anybody doesn't have it. But if anybody else could get me comments via email, I think it would be very helpful, and then we can, if there's no comments, then this might be it. And if there are comments, then I can try and incorporate those before the next time that we might meet. Though I do want to make two comments. One is that for stormwater management, I updated the clause in here specifically to refer to the stormwater provision in Hatfield zoning bylaw, which, I don't remember what was in here before, but it was very weak. And also to encourage using the open space and/or any vegetated buffers as sort of low-impact development for stormwater management, as opposed to building, you know, more catch basins and jumping it all into the town.
Right, yeah, right, yeah.
Along those lines, Hatfield is an MS4 regulated community, and I, I made, this is in the comment there, but we recommend extracting any stormwater bylaw from the zoning bylaw as a whole, and setting it up as its own general bylaw, because there may be projects that don't, that wouldn't trigger any sort of zoning review, but that should trigger stormwater management permitting processes. And I don't know if any of you have worked with Patty Gamborini, who's one of our principal planners at PBPC, but she facilitates the Pioneer Valley Stormwater Committee, and that is like a very robust, well-attended committee from probably most of the MS4 communities in our region, and they work together to develop educational material, et cetera, to meet the requirements of the new MS4 permit. So I don't know if, if you are specifically working on updating your bylaw to come into compliance with the 2016 update, which, you know, needs, needs to be in place as of July, this coming July, or if that would be under your DPW or Highway Department. But attendance there is, I think, very helpful for communities. And then also PBPC is either for a fee, or under DLTA or LTA, looking at our MS4 communities' stormwater ordinances or bylaws to flag areas that need to be updated, and depending on the size of the project, make those revisions for communities. So I wanted to put in a plug for that, because that's important.
So if you took the stormwater review out of the planning bylaws, who would oversee it, then?
You could, so it would be an opportunity to sort of review your permitting process and decide if, if the way that it's happening right now is working, if the way that it's happening right now is working, it could stay. I'm assuming it's, it has to be the planning board, because it's in zoning, so it could stay with the planning board. It depends on where you feel your expertise is, and obviously, expertise doesn't always necessarily long-lived, it could be that there's one individual who's, has engineering understanding, who's in the conservation commission, for example, but they might retire soon. But if you feel like your conservation commission is, even if it's not in a wetland jurisdictional area, is the best place to go, we have seen that before, but planning board is the most common. I've seen conservation commissions across the board, and then also DPW, but it would just be written into the bylaws, who the authority was. And it would be set up as a separate permitting process then, so it wouldn't necessarily, you know, it wouldn't just be part of site plan review, for example, but it makes sense to stay in the planning board, so as not to repeat or confuse permitting processes if, you know, if an applicant has to go through the planning board, anyway. But we have, if you apply for, and Patty knows more of the better funding sources for this, but if you apply for and work with us on a bigger grant of this, this is something that we sit down and work through the processes with you, to really make sure that things are streamlined, as opposed to just updating the language. And the last thing I'll say is that, right now, there is another municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, certification grant, coming out from Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Are you familiar with MVP? Are you working with anybody, or is that...
No, actually, if you could get us that information, and Patty's contact information?
Yep, I can send you Patty's contact information, and Emily Slotnick is our project manager for MVP, but that's another, if, once you become MVP certified, which is funded through this certification grant, that opens up $400,000 action grants every year to help you become more prepared for climate vulnerabilities, which can be anything from social to environmental to infrastructural vulnerabilities that the town itself identifies. So that's a very useful opportunity.
Okay.
So I'll send you information about those.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, is Chris Bloom here? Okay. Actually, I wanna...
I'm surprised you waited it out, Chris.
So come on up, Chris. Frank Swazlowski?
Nope.
Zach Langlois?
Nope.
The Mark Wamsley, Mark Gilot, that, we didn't need to discuss that tonight, anyway, so, and then we discuss the zoning bylaws, so, okay. All right, Chris.
Hi, this is just a, hi, I'm Chris Bloom. I am gonna share with some folks tonight, just a preliminary of what we're thinking of doing on a parcel of land next to 471 Main Street. Just to get some of your opinions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just to get some of your opinions before we start. We'd like to put affordable, one-level condominiums in three bedrooms, two baths, two car garages.
Where is 471? Chris, tell me about that.
Where is 471 Main Street? 471 Main Street is about a mile and a half north of the road.
That was the farmland that Enterprise Farm was renting.
Basically, across the street from where the building contractor lives.
Is it Dow... Dower? What was it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Mr. Dower used to own it. It's near Mark Stein's house, it's up, not far from Bernie's farm.
It was a parcel that was for sale, for...
It still has it for sale.
It still is.
Yeah. And it's a...
So, how big is this parcel?
This is about... This is about 22 acres. We're just going to go like that. It's all we're going to do.
So, the... Here's the... Main Street comes out here, it goes back, it's wooded in the back, there's a small farm field way in the back.
I didn't take the main copies of this, so...
And so, describe again what it is you want to do here.
So, we're thinking of putting a condominium development here.
And how many acres would that development be?
Probably about seven or eight. And just, uh...
So, you would be doing this under our current subdivision provisions?
Correct. That is correct.
And so, these are... Can you describe... These are three units?
So, what we have here, sir, proposing is three units, then three units, then three, then three, then three, then three, then three, then three, and three.
Okay. And these are all...
Total number is how many?
Best guess, best guess, 30, yeah.
Yeah, 30. And are you... And you said, you said, would this be a 40B project?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
So, when... Can you describe what you meant by, you said, lower moderate income?
I'd like to look at CPA money as possible, and try to bring this, these units to the $300,000 price range.
Have you looked at what... Have you done the research on what the...
Just, uh...
Okay. So, I can tell you, because I'm also the chair of the Community Preservation Committee, that we have $195,000 in our community housing budget, or account. So, it's not a whole lot of money there. $60,000 of which was spoken for last week, and if it's used, it would be for a unit. But, so, we could have as... If that money is used, which has already been approved for use, if it is actually ultimately used, there'd be $135,000 available. It's not a whole lot of money.
To be honest with the folks, we thought about this before we even heard of CPA. We came in this, so, town hall, and they said, "Look at CPA money, because we just put that on the table and said, 'Please.'" All right.
So, if you're looking at bringing these down to 300,000...
Would like to.
That, yeah. Well, I'd be curious, and it would be up to you to do the homework, as to whether or not that actually would qualify any of these lots for the local initiative project at the state level, for the median income requirements.
I'm just here to say, good evening, that's all.
Do you know... So, I do know this property fairly well, and presumably, you know, there's a fair... It's fairly wet back in here.
Punky in the back. About 450 feet off the street, it gets, it gets kind of punky.
Yeah, so, I mean, this would have... You'd have to go through Conservation Commission to see what kind of your setbacks would be required, so you can get a sense as to how much of this is actually developable. I would suspect that some of this, particularly back in here, would be, would be limited by the required setbacks from...
No question.
Wetland delineation.
No question.
And this is just general housing? It's not 55 and over?
I don't, I really don't want to do 55 and over. That takes away teachers, that takes away, kind of use of terminology, blue collar workers. Sure, why not? Right, okay.
I'm not sure that it actually would even qualify for the 55 and over... Well, it certainly wouldn't, I mean, you could, you could certainly make it 55 and over, but you wouldn't get the, the... You wouldn't get the benefits in the... Because there's no commercial zone anywhere near here.
I think I do better with opening up to people who are looking for affordable housing in the good town, because you use town employees, you know, blue collar workers.
Well, I guess, yeah, so you would need to, you obviously, do your homework in terms of both the, the extent to which this lot can be developed, the land given wet areas and wetlands delineations and setbacks. And then also, you know, I would encourage you, you know, as it sounds like you're going to do your, your, your homework on, you know, if, if a $300,000 house is, I mean, you know, it could be a $300,000 house, that doesn't necessarily mean it's affordable to perhaps, you know, certainly, maybe get us on the, on the local initiative project list, so...
I mean, my engineer said, "You didn't have to be here to language, I know," but I said, "Draw that for me, I want to go say hi." I don't know if you guys hear.
Yeah.
That's all.
At 9:20.
Yeah.
It's high.
9:20, it's high.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot, Chris.
Okay, Chris, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll see you again soon. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, since, since none of the folks left in the room are Frank Swazlowski or Zach Langlois, we have, I believe, one set of minutes.
Yeah, we should approve that.
Yeah, we have one set of minutes in our, in our package. This is from our previous meeting of January 2nd.
Motion to approve.
It was just that, was just the issue with Mr. Lampren.
Yes.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. So, the motion's on the table, people, if they need to take a minute or two to read through these and refamiliarize yourself with that meeting, but we approve Mr. Lampren's purchase up there. Purchase in his site plan, his...
The air conditioning company, yeah.
Right. So, any other...
Did he go along with that? Did he go ahead with that project, or not, Lampren?
I went by, I went back there, and it's, I don't know, it's like all cleaned up.
Oh, really?
So, you know, yeah, there's nothing back there anymore.
Although, as we all read in the newspaper, and the Dussos have sold.
Sold their property.
And so, presumably, he's talking with them to make sure, because remember, there were some easements associated with this.
I contacted him, I saw him on the road, so I stopped him, and I said, "You better get over there and talk with those people right now. Don't wait till next month, do it now." Because while it's hot, they may be available to say, "Okay, we'll give you 15 feet," or "We'll sell you 15 feet," to get around that corner, that building, and get around that kind of stuff.
Right.
And he was very appreciative, and I told him that if, in fact, he needed an entry into USA Today, I knew some folks that knew the people that own USA Today. And he's never contacted me back, so he might have gone direct.
And then got it worked out.
Yeah, he might have gone.
So, can I get... We have a motion with seconded, all in favor of accepting these minutes of January 2nd?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed, motion carries. I'm going to suggest, given the late hour and the fact that those guy, the folks from Hauska have to bring in another sheet, which means that all of us would have to make our way down here to sign that last sheet, that we just sign them, everybody just...
Sign them at one.
Make your way, you know, we can do it individually, just make your way into Wilma's office.
Okay.
I'll have her let us know when...
Yeah, have her let us know when it's ready, and we'll just drop them.
When the other one is there, and just, as soon as you can, go in to just sign these, okay? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You got it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned for the night.
Hey, Bernie.